Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. And welcome everybody, thank you all for being here. And we will start off with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, there is a sign-in sheet up front. Do we have any revisions?
Uh, yes, uh, you should have a revised, um, board agenda, but we did add a couple of items under the area technology center site demo. And also, there was a couple of items, ST and U was added under the consent items. And, um, I believe that is pretty much it.
Okay. First on the agenda, we have facilities and we have a roof replacement project.
Peter's with us this afternoon, so take off, man. He's back from vacation, he ought to be well rested.
There you go. Thank you all very much. Uh, the pay application is for the Estill County Roof Replacement Projects, um, and the pay application number 11. I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have about the project. It has been a difficult month with weather progress, um, with all the rain, but even with that said, the project is nearing completion. Uh, this pay application is forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. It runs through the period ending May twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen. And, uh, we have reviewed the payout and we think that it represents, uh, everything that has been installed and completed today to recommend approval.
And just so you all know, they're only about six days away from getting all the metal on the roof at Springs, but they can't. I mean, they just can't get up there when it's wet and take a chance on falling out that thing, so, uh, I think it's, uh, my recommendation is to, uh, pay the forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and hopefully pray for good weather.
Do we have a motion? Hey, we have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And next on the agenda, we have the area technology center site demo.
I'll start out with just the groundbreaking report. We had a, uh, big crowd turn out last, uh, Friday for the groundbreaking and I thought it was a, a big community event and things went great and had our local representatives there and, um, representatives from Congressman Barr's office, uh, Congressman, um, I'm sorry, Senator McConnell's rep was in my office yesterday, uh, and, uh, she wanted to drop by, she wasn't able to attend Friday, but, uh, a lot of support from our, uh, representatives, our, uh, state and, uh, federal, uh, representatives and our partners, uh, all our community partners. And, uh, so it was a big event and, uh, we've got a meeting onsite Tuesday at ten a.m. and equipment should be arriving next week and I think they'll probably even try to start late next week. They've got sixty days from the day they start to be finished. Uh, no weather days, no nothing, thirty, sixty straight days, you be done and off the property, so, uh, um, that's pretty much, uh, the report on that. And, uh, just, uh, for your all's information on the EDA grant, I know everybody keeps asking, we have all of our paperwork in, feel really good, we're just waiting for a final decision from EDA, uh, they have completed their final legal review. Um, we were hoping to hear something here before the first of July and still have no reason not to believe that that won't happen, uh, but, uh, hopefully, uh, we will, uh, hear something. I'm, I'm gonna drop an email tomorrow, just, uh, sort of be a little nosy to see if we can push it along a little bit, but, uh, that's, uh, pretty much the update, I don't know if y'all have any questions. All right, Peter?
So, um, we have, uh, Taylor accommodated us getting, uh, this recommendation letter to you guys today, which I really appreciate. Uh, it is for special inspection services for the Estill County ATC project. Um, we're anxious for you all to take a look in particular at the demo, the demolition portion of this package, because it's gonna start next week and we would like to have these engineers onsite. There are a couple of tricky issues with the demolition that's gonna go on there, we have some pyridic shale in the soil, and then we also have some contaminated or possibly contaminated soils with the, the gasoline tanks and the diesel tanks that are underground. So we would like to get them onsite as soon as the demolition work starts. And so what we're asking for tonight is consideration and approval of contract with TerraCon Consultants who are the low proposal, um, for the demolition package work only. That's this first, this first number two item here. And just so you know, because it's not terribly clear in our letters at the very end and the conclusion, the demolition package, uh, for them is five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Is what, is what their services are for this demolition package.
And to be clear, that's the only thing we're really asking you to approve tonight that really binds us by contract. Uh, the other item will be, uh, once the bid takes place for the entire facility. Um, but it's important, uh, to have these inspectors onsite, as Peter said, there's some issues there, we wanna make sure, uh, if we have any pyridic shale, for instance, it's uncovered, we will make sure to get it covered up or we don't have issues with that facility later on, so, uh, fifty-nine hundred, I believe, and forty-five dollars is the amount, and my recommendation is that, uh, we enter into a contract with TerraCon to, uh, uh, do that work for us.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian.
This is just part of the earlier, during the meeting, uh... That's all of this.
And maybe, uh, pre-need, uh, soil for the camera as well.
Yes. And that's what, all if you remember, the, the bid for the demo package was for a certain amount, but that included allowances in there for remover of bad soils and, uh, pyridic shale, it was uncovered, if those items don't happen or those things don't happen, then the actual amount of that work is gonna go down significantly.
Correct.
Uh, if it, if it was to be a major issue, the, the amount of money for that work could go up, but at least we've got a unit price, so they're locked into a specific price, they can't upcharge us once that's happened. It's just one of those things, it's underground, it's unforeseen, you just don't know until you get to going. Don't expect a big issue, but you just never know.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Number three?
All right, number three is, uh, we're dealing with the same letter of recommendation and the same proposal sent by TerraCon, um, the, the motion re- consideration approval of the contract with TerraCon Consultants for Estill ATC project pending a successful bid with, uh, the, the selected alternatives. So, what this is doing is allowing the district to just go ahead after, after the building package is bid successfully, your, you would have a contact with your specialist inspector to do, just to finish out the project, um, through the building phase, through the building package. You'll notice for, um, a decent amount of money more, I'm thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-two thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars for the building package. It's a lot more to do, they have a lot more to do with materials testing, uh, they're still doing all the work in the ground with the shale that may come up or contaminated soils that may come up as they put in foundations or, or, um, dig out ground for foundations, but then they also have to deal with all the structural issues with the building, including concrete and steel, and so that's why it's, uh, a significant number higher, so, but this is, this would not bind you all until, you know, after there, there was a successful bid for the project.
Just keeps us from having to bring it back up later, it just sort of, uh, planning ahead. And as you can see, they're definitely the low bidder across the board, uh, for this work, so, uh, my recommendation would be to approve that pending a successful bid of the ATC construction.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? So, moving right along, next on the agenda, we have our, um, the land acquisition.
Um, we have our information into, uh, KDE and we've received a letter back, uh, from KDE concerning, uh, uh, just some points that they wanted to make about the properties, so we're trying to, uh, pin those down. Um, I do think that, um, I would like to add to the closed session, uh, Ms. Felicia, if it's okay, I guess it will be a revision, but I would like to talk about that letter a little bit more in depth because I need to tell you about, uh, one issue that's risen, but, um, we feel like that those things, Peter and I have talked at length today, uh, in my office before the meeting, um, but, um, everything's in, it's just a matter, we just wanna make sure that, uh, full disclosure for you all and, um, and, uh, of course, we can do that in closed session, so, uh, I would like to just, uh, move that, but we are moving forward with the land purchase right now, okay?
And then next, we just have the general fund resolution for general fund payment prior to contract signing.
Yes, and you've got that, uh, in front of you as well, that's in the little packet that Felicia had for you, and, uh, the resolution, basically, uh, this is for the financial end of it because there's actually work being done before the bonds are sold in August, and, um, we will want to be able to pay the general fund back, uh, the general fund right now is supporting that, um, those payments and probably will have at least, might not be a big July payment, but August will be a pretty big payment, uh, to the demo contractor, uh, so, we're gonna want to be able to pay ourselves back, uh, once the bonds are sold, so that's what this, uh, does, Mark Rawlings with, uh, Herod and Lyons, uh, has prepared that document, and, uh, my recommendation is that, uh, yes, we want to do that.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Next on the agenda, we have a long list of consent items.
Yeah, and usually, I mean, consent items, I mean, sometimes, for full disclosure, we'll, we'll just go through these, uh, and we'll have one motion to approve all of them. Peter, thank you. Of course, we have the minutes of our last regular called meeting, the special called meeting on June the eleventh, the treasure report, uh, Angie gave you the check signing authority, as you know, we've had some leadership changes and, uh, our new assistant principal was just hired at the middle school, uh, I'm sorry, at the high school this past week, Laura Wilson, so we waited to get her name on there, that way we wouldn't have to bring it back to you, but Angie gave that to you just a little bit earlier. Uh, you have your payment of bills and, uh, there's two that was given to you, uh, just a little bit ago, and of course, what that is, is just trying to make sure that, uh, we get all of that, uh, to you ahead of time, but, uh, as you know, uh, we're trying to make sure we get our bills paid, uh, before, um, the end of the year. We're still gonna have a few things, uh, that we will have to approve, uh, with that. Um, you've got your policies that we were given last time on first reading and, uh, there was no changes to those policies that we approved at first reading last time. Uh, also, we had the second reading of the disposal of school property. Uh, I did bring to you a new policy on, uh, guest speakers, and this was after our discussion last time. This is sort of what we put together, uh, and listen, as I said, if we don't like this, we can go ahead and just make this one for first reading tonight, uh, but what we did is, we agreed last time that anybody convicted of a sex-related offense would not be in one of our classrooms, anybody with any offense against a minor, no matter what it is, would not be allowed. A felony offense conviction against any person, a deadly weapons-related offense conviction, anybody convicted of a deadly weapons charge would not be allowed, uh, to be in our facility. And we talked about the other one at length was drug-related offenses, and, uh, the suggestion was after Jonathan looked at it, after the law office looked at it, um, we came up with that, uh, maybe that we would put a five-year limit on that if they've not had a drug conviction within the last five years, that that person could be cleared only by my approval. I would have to approve that one. Uh, the rest of them, it falls back to the principal and, um, the principal would have to get a background check done through and it's, uh, the, not the FBI background check, it would be the one done through the office of the courts, uh, that Teresa does for all volunteers. Uh, they would also get a CAN report, which is the child abuse and neglect report, and there would have to be some legwork done in order to get these people approved before they, you know, they could actually be in the classroom. But, um, that's the policy as it is, if you all like that, we can make a change to it, and if you wanna make a change, if you think five years is too long, uh, we can go to three, if you'd rather do that, if we do, we can knock that down to three, if there's anything else you wanna put under exceptions. We've got plenty of time to have this in place for the school year is what I'm trying to say, if you're pleased with it, then we can leave it as is. So if there's any discussion about that one, or if not, then I'm assuming that we would leave it as is. Is everybody good? Okay, moving on then, uh, you've got your community eligibility program that's in there, that's what allows everybody... Good? That's what allows everybody to eat free, uh, our procurement, how we, uh, purchase, uh, indirect cost, charge the lunchrooms for, uh, and that money goes back to the general fund. And then, uh, you've got a bunch of old contracts here, you know, like, uh, Air Source Technologies, you got a Gear Up MOA, uh, School Point is our, um, website, uh, and updating our website, it's time to do an update to the website. Um, Chromebook lease, uh, we've got some donated equipment that we need to accept in inventory so that it will be covered by insurance, we've got a frisky memorandum of agreement, uh, GoGuardian order, Matthew, what is it, GoGuardian?
Right now, the manage, like, I had, I don't know, it was like, we had, like, three different sets of software, and the GoGuardian lets us use just one software, it says the same thing all three of those did, and it's the same software, I don't know, uh, basically the same, but it's one piece of software that does it better than the three in the other ones.
Good deal, I did, I didn't, wanted to make sure what exactly that was, but I knew it come from Jeremy, but I didn't realize exactly what it was. We got the contract for Medicaid billing, and some good news on that front is, is that there may be some leeway in terms of us billing for services for our students and receiving reimbursement for that, which may help us, uh, pay for some of our nursing services. Um, we've got a math, science, uh, mentor job description, uh, that we need to approve. Uh, there's a school staffing, uh, revision, uh, and it's for custodians, and, um, that one's in the items that Felicia gave you, and that's where we've asked for the custodian at South Irvin to return, be returned back to two-hundred-and-sixty-one days, just like everybody else. That means that person will now take over all the mowing duties and everything at that school, which frees up our maintenance department a little bit more to keep them off the mowers. And, um, I know this is a lot, the AmeriCorps program, that's what allows our, uh, we do have some students that can work in our youth service centers and family resource centers and they can, they're being paid through AmeriCorps, uh, so they're not being paid through board money, and, uh, to approve our bond, uh, of depository. And those are your, um, consent items, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about them, but if there's not any questions, then, uh, my recommendation would be to approve those consent items.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? They're approved. Next on the agenda, we have public comments.
And I would let you all know that I excused, uh, most of central office and principals today, a lot of them are leaving on vacation tomorrow, so, I just told them that we can handle it tonight.
Okay, so, next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's report and the board member forum.
Um, real quick, you've got your notification of personnel actions, I know there's a lot of those there, uh, for you all to go through, a lot of them were just notifying you who's been hired so far. Um, we're down to four or five positions, but it seemed like every time we get down a couple, we had another resignation today, uh, expecting another one early next week, if not tomorrow, uh, possibility, so, there's gonna be some moving around here for the next little bit, but, uh, for the most part, most of our positions are, uh, filling up and, um, we look forward to, you know, getting everybody hired and getting them in the district and, um, I've got my activity report that I will, uh, share with everyone, uh, just this past, uh, just this past, uh, month, some of the things that I've been involved in. I usually try to do this for you all. And, uh, there's, uh, been quite a few things, uh, that, uh, been dealing with here over the last, uh, month, but a lot of it, uh, related to the area technology center and moving forward with that, uh, the grant process. The energy report, uh, I think we're slowly getting everything in line like at Estill Springs and stuff, we've been up and down, but we're getting that system under control and, if you notice your energy report, we, we had a big month in terms of energy savings. Uh, I mean, we saved, uh, almost, I think it was like seven thousand dollars this past month in energy. Uh, of course, it's been a little bit cooler maybe, although we did go through a couple weeks there, it was hot as heck, now we're right back into this cool weather, but it's a good energy report, and also you got fundraiser report, so, that is it in terms of, uh, my report, now I don't know if any of the board members have anything.
Do they have anything? Okay, next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's evaluation, but we will go into closed session, right?
Yeah, we, well, I think we go into closed session and then, uh, once you come out of, uh, closed session, then you would report the results of that evaluation.
Okay. So I need a motion to go into closed session. You second that, Brian? Any discussion? All in favor?
Now, we don't anticipate a long period of time, right? So if you all wanna stick around for just a few minutes? So if you all want to stick around for just a few minutes.
Okay.
So, just like to report that we in closed session, the superintendent's evaluation was discussed and the overall rating is accomplished. So now we will focus on the standards that we want Mr. Saylor to focus on for this upcoming year.
Would you standard two this year?
Yes. Instructional leadership was the one he focused on this past year, which is standard two.
I don't know what you all are thinking, but I do think that, as you know, we've had a leadership change at one of our schools. Well, really, we've had leadership changes at two of our schools. And there has been some transfers of personnel between a couple of different schools in order to address some needs that we've had. I think that's created a little bit of strife in our district. And I do believe that culture is something that we're really going to have to focus on this year to get back. You know, we've had a lot of positive momentum with all of our schools now being engineers. Still go back to that day when we brought that band out there after our state championship and all those kids showed up out there on that field. And, you know, we've had some very positive moments with culture. But this past year's been a hard year, too. I mean, we've had to focus with some very tough personnel issues. We've had to face the loss of students this year. As a matter of fact, the last two years. We've got to really have a focus on mental health in our district to address not only the mental health needs of our kids, but also of our staff. It's been a really tough year in some things. There's been a lot of great things that's happened, but there's been a lot of tough issues that have happened as well. So, I mean, my suggestion is, is that I know that I'm going to be focusing a lot on culture and trying to improve the culture and get back some of that positive momentum that we've had. Now, I don't know if you all have another area that you would like for me to focus on. I do think that culture's a huge piece. If there's something else you do want me to focus on, I think we do need to at least keep it to no more than two of the seven standards. So I don't know what you all are thinking, but as I told you at the last meeting, I do think that culture is a huge piece for this coming year.
That would be my recommendation, is to add back culture because I know that was a focus year before last, I think, was culture was one of the main things we discussed. And I would, my suggestion would be to keep number two again, just because of...
It's three, you know?
Culture is, but add two and three. Yeah, do both because I think, in my personal opinion, is I think with test scores and daily learning, and that's one of our biggest focuses, that, I mean, to continue to focus on that.
And I'm perfectly fine with that because I still have the same goals in place. I can adjust those goals and then I can add goals for cultural leadership so we can focus on those two areas. And that, I'm more than pleased to be able, I'm going to be working in all seven areas, but in terms of reporting back to you all, that will be more than fine.
So instructional leadership, which is standard two, and standard three, cultural leadership.
I am supposed to bring you all a professional growth plan, I think, by September. But I'll, I'll have it to you by then easily. And we'll move forward.
Okay. We need a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.